I call this special board meeting of the USD 350 Board of Education to order. Welcome. Budget here. I have no public for comments, so.
Imagine it.
We'll close the budget here. And Josh, budget?
I have the budget here presented for approval. There have been no changes since publication. I ask for a motion to approve that.
I salute.
It's been moved in second to approve the 2020 through 21 budget. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same side. Motion carried. School operations plan.
This has been quite a work in progress over this last week, working with staff, tweaking things, make sure we can get kids back to school and do it in a safe manner. So I'll go through the highlights here and stop me if there's something that's not clear. But how we'll progress in the year would depend on the risk and restriction level in our community and basing it more than just on how many active cases we have in the county, but looking at various factors, and that's what's in this gating criteria. So the active case level in the county is a factor. And it would be in the low, moderate, high range, and then we have the four colors. The number of students and staff we have identified as testing positive, active cases. And then the number of active quarantine orders, looking at our staff and students. And then what's that active case trend in the county? And then looking at our absentee rates. So all of those things will combine into one color. So for instance, right now, as of Friday, at least, there were 16 active cases. So on this one, we would be orange. The number of staff and students right now was, I think, at two, so it would be yellow. The number in quarantine was eight, so it would be green. The active case trend over the last two weeks, we went from nothing to having cases. So obviously, it's increasing. We'd be in the red there. I don't know about our student absenteeism. I don't know how much sickness there is going on because we don't have the kids yet. With our staff, we really have hardly any sickness, so we'd be at green here. So combining all those things together, we'd probably be in the yellow area. So as of today, we're in the yellow. Any changes, we would post on our website and social media if we need to make changes. So that's how we determine where we're at. And then this is the basic operations plan that we've been discussing all along, making some adjustments, how are we going to do school, how are we going to do certain things? And this is going to need to be a bit flexible. If we're in yellow, we may make adjustments on any one of these particular lines depending on the situation. Activities is one area where we've made some changes, and this one's just we've struggled with. So as of today, green and yellow, practices and events would be allowed with restrictions as needed. And then in the orange level, practices with modifications, and then we may not have events or maybe we have them and just not allow a crowd. And if we're in this high range, we would have no practices or games. What we do with the spectators? From what we learned at the county commission meeting, we can allow, even with the group size limit restrictions, if we can maintain social distance, we can still have patrons in for a concert. We just have to limit capacity for a ballgame that we can keep apart. Outdoor events, same thing there, we can maintain social distance, we can have those. Does it make sense to allow people in the gym right now? I don't know. We'll make those calls as they come up, but this gives us some general guidelines. And again, the masks, we've got more specifics on those here in the rest of the plan. So the student learning, our goal is to be onsite as much as possible. We had talked about if we need to go more restrictive doing a homeroom situation where half of the sophomore class is in one room all day. So they're onsite, but they're kind of learning remotely. And as we've talked through that, the logistics of getting that done just don't really make sense. So we may utilize that at some point, but we'd probably be looking at more of a hybrid model where seventh grade, ninth grade, and 11th grade come on Monday, and then the other three grades come on Tuesday. And we would run a regular schedule. We'd just have half the number of kids in our secondary school environment. And then, so while the one group is at home, they're learning on Zoom virtually, while the other kids are learning in class with the teacher. So that maintains some separation from those groups. And then if we get to remote, everybody's at home, learning virtually. The goal is to run the regular school schedule all the time. So even if we're learning remotely, first period is still first period. We just log on and take attendance that way. We will have some individuals that want to learn at home from day one all year. We have had a handful of folks sign up for that. So they'll be learning right along with the kids at school, but they'll just be online.
Very many of them at this point?
Probably have seven or eight at the junior high school.
Maybe, yeah, maybe 15 so far. So we want them to commit to a semester, but we're going to be flexible with that. We just want folks to understand we're not going back and forth with this deal. We do have some few kids that may have to start under quarantine. They don't want to be remote learners all year, but they have to be, and that's going to pop up throughout the year. But these individuals that have chosen that, that they want to do it all year, they want to commit to a semester, but you know, if they get two weeks into it and think this is not working for us, we want them onsite. We'll make changes as needed if it's in the best interest of the kids. So if the students are doing the work right along with the class, they log into Zoom or Google Classroom, whatever, the teacher can take attendance that way. They don't need to log their time. If there's a situation where that's just not possible and we have to push out the content and they do it on their own schedule, then they have to have a daily log. Teachers still have to make connections, but that'll mostly be up to what's feasible for the classroom. For the most part, we want them working right along with the regular school schedule. Stable groups, we feel are elementary. We've got a good plan to keep, first grade with first grade and second grade with second grade. So we think even if we get into that orange area, we can probably still stay here, just making adjustments where maybe they don't go to PE class or music class. Maybe the teachers come to them, things like that, make those adjustments. So we want everybody in a mask. We know there's going to be difficulties with the younger grades. We've got masks on order for everybody. I hope they come in this week. They're supposed to be coming in this week. So staff and students, grades five and up in the building, for the most part, we're wearing the masks. Now, if there's situations where they can be apart, kind of like we are right now, we don't have to wear them. If a doctor, if somebody has a doctor's note, there'll be an exception for that. How do we determine whether it's a valid note or not? If the doctor signs it, that's that. So we've provided some examples of when the mask can be removed. Just a note about being able to take breaks and get outside and maintain the distance and find ways to get those masks off during the day because I'm sure you all know they're not much fun to wear. The junior high and high school students, they're going to be responsible for taking care of their own mask. I'm sure we're going to have kids want to bring their own. Our elementary students, we'll provide masks for them. We've got five masks and we've got a mesh bag that we'll put them in and launder them every week. We do need the kids to have their own masks that they wear as they come in the building and as they leave. It doesn't make much sense to have those kids wearing masks in the classroom and as they move around the building. And then when we dismiss school, we have them keep their mask here at school because we don't want it to go missing. And then nobody has a mask on when they leave, so. Visitors are going to be required to wear a mask. We'll take the temperatures in the classroom. All the teachers will be assigned to do that and then answering note of these two questions. Have you been in contact with somebody that has COVID or are you experiencing symptoms? So our protocols, our nurse's office, there's a room right off of there. It was a speech room. That will be our isolation room. So if somebody has symptoms, they will go to that room and stay until they can be picked up or sent home. So if there are symptoms, we don't want kids to come to school or employees to come to work. And this just notes that we're going to be asking more questions than maybe we normally would of parents and employees that, you know, maybe how you, what are your symptoms? Have you been exposed to the virus and things like that? That maybe in a normal year, we wouldn't be asking. So this bullet list just spells out what happens if somebody tests positive. People want to know, what are you going to do when you have that first positive case in your school? Well, it's a simple question, but it doesn't have a simple answer. There's a lot of different circumstances that would warrant different course of action. So what we do is dependent on the circumstances of the situation, and we would work through that with the county health department. Areas would be cleaned and disinfected that need to be, wherever that person was. Then we would go to identify close contacts of that individual. We would notify everybody, all the parents of students that are close contacts. And again, this would be done in cooperation with the health department, and there would be a quarantine period for those close contacts. It could be a situation where we shut down the school, maybe for a day, figure it out. Student in second grade tests positive. That child has a sibling in sixth grade, another one in eighth grade, and two in high school. That's a problem. We may see something like that and go, oh no, we just need to shut down and figure this out. It could be a situation where we just stay open because we knew it was coming. That second grade student, mom has COVID and the second grade's, or somebody in the family has COVID and the second grade student is gone, had to be tested. We know the kid's gone. We know the kid's being tested. We've been isolating second grade. We get information that the kid tests positive. We kind of knew it was coming, and we've been careful anyway. We just go about our business and then maybe the second grade would have to quarantine. So are we going to shut down? Maybe, depending on the circumstances. At the elementary level, those students are in the classroom, contained for much of the day. It's likely that if one child in the class tests positive or the teacher, the entire class would need to quarantine. At the secondary level, where they move around more for shorter periods of time, again, depending on the circumstances, it may be that if this child, this student tests positive, then we're going to look at, okay, first hour, who was a close contact? Second hour, who was a close contact? Throughout the day, can we identify those close contacts? And it wouldn't need to be just the entire high school shuts down. So that gives you a little snapshot of how things would go. And again, it's entirely dependent on the circumstances. So all of this information is just helpful information as a guideline for us. Again, all this would be done through the health department as far as when people are considered contagious, how we define those close contacts. If someone's excluded from school, it's going to be a tough year. Kid has a fever, no other symptoms, in a normal year, been fever free for 24 hours and come back to school. Maybe the kid didn't even need to go to the doctor. That's not the case this year. If there's symptoms, students, employees need to seek medical attention, either from the health department or from their doctor. So there's going to be situations, illnesses are still going to be going around that aren't COVID. So if testing wasn't required, they can come back at the direction of their doctor as a general rule, 24 hours without a fever. So an example, a kid has a fever, we send him home. He goes to the doctor, looks like strep throat. They test him, he has the strep, get antibiotics. The doctor says, you're fever free for 24 hours and go back to school. So we're not going to keep kids out of school more than we normally would if we know what's going on. If we send somebody home with symptoms and they didn't, do not seek medical attention or they're required to get a test and they choose not to, in those situations, we'll treat it like it was a positive case. Anybody that's been tested and awaiting results should be under isolation order from the county health department anyway, or under the direction of their doctor. If somebody in a household is being tested, the rest of the family members do not need to quarantine. For example, in my household, if Peyton is required to get a test, get tested for COVID, the rest of the family does not need to quarantine. And Mia would be at school and Mr. and Mrs. Meyer would be at work. That, people may look at that and say, oh, if that child is being tested this and everybody needs not be at work or at school. So we may have that situation pop up if people question that. We may, as a family, choose to be more careful and not be around, but it's not required that household members be isolated. If there is a positive case, then it's 10 days after symptoms have passed. Or if it's longer than that, then they need to be fever free for 72 hours. If there's a negative result, a negative test result, the health department still needs to order that somebody can come back to school or to work. If somebody is under quarantine because they were exposed to a positive case and they test negative three days into that quarantine, they're not allowed to come back. They need to finish out that 14 days. So there's been some confusion about that because that 14-day window is any time in that 14 days you could develop symptoms. So if you test negative on day three, you may have symptoms and test positive on day five. So typically, right now in the county, you need to have, have two of those symptoms and be ordered by a doctor to get a test or the health department. I can't just go request that I be tested. If there is a positive case, then everybody in the household needs to quarantine. And this will be a challenge. Somebody in the house is sick with COVID, they're sick for 10 days, and then they get better, then the quarantine of the family members starts on day 11. So it goes two weeks beyond when symptoms go away. So we may have situations where a family would be quarantined for a month. So that's a tough situation to deal with. We would follow any travel-related quarantines from K D H E. All of this information spells out kind of what was in that bulleted list. What are we going to do if there's a positive case? Cleaning, contact tracing, all of that. We do have an option for this modified quarantine. I'm not sure that it makes sense to use it, but let's go back to the situation where a second grader tests positive. We consider that whole class, close contacts, they all need to quarantine. So they need to learn from home. Now, this modified quarantine says we could bring those students up to the school in a special location, like in here, for instance. Second graders stay at home, they quarantine at home or they quarantine here. There's a separate bathroom. We didn't have lunch brought to them. They don't go anywhere except here. And then extra cleaning protocols. I don't know if it makes sense to do that. If we do that, then bring all the kids back together and then another kid tests positive. Now, we're extending that another 14 days for everybody. And then another tests positive, and then we're extending it again. So you can see there's a challenge there, but if in December, we've been learning remotely for a long time, we've got to get these kids in school, it might make sense in that case. So we've got it there. I'm not sure we're going to use that. I won't read all of these bulleted items to you. So speak up if you have questions.
In there, I seen under restrooms clean three times a day. Don't want to sound like a germaphobe, but what about doors? Is that going to be the same type of protocol? Or classroom doors will remain open so there's less physical touch?
That's the goal, yeah. Keep them open as much as possible. During passing period, prop them open.
And entryways on campus, I guess?
Yeah, yeah, everything.
Yeah.
Yeah, sanitize as much as possible. In the classroom, we're going to try to sanitize the desks, you know, when you switch classes, but just an example, we're thinking through that. One of the English teachers has 80 kids come through during the day. That's 80 wipes that were used, so.
One container?
Yeah.
Move of wipes?
One day.
For class. Hope we don't run out.
Visitors will be very limited this year. You know, there may be situations for instructional purposes, having people in or they'll be screened and follow the rules that everybody else does. But things like the birthday parties in the classroom and the Valentine's Day party, we're not going to have parents coming in and doing those things as long as we're in this mess. We tried to spell out some more information about the masks. Having classrooms set for each student. Technology, we've got devices ordered enough where every student will have one. So we'll essentially be one-to-one preschool on up. So seven through 12 already has their devices. In the kindergarten classroom, in a typical year, we have, you know, five or six iPads that they share and use during the standard time, do their S T math or their reading program. Each student will have their own. That will help with the sharing of items. But more importantly, if on Thursday, we realize we've got to go remote on Friday, we've got devices for everybody. If this is yours, take it home. So we're equipped to do that, or we will be. Our iPads, I think, beginning of September is when they'll be in, so. So here's that passing period, prop the doors open. Morning arrival will be different because of our breakfast situation. We're just doing take-home breakfast. So the doors won't open until 7:50. Students will report directly to their classroom. We want to avoid congregating. And then when we dismiss, students are assigned for the elementary, which door to go out. And we'll have a staggered dismissal time. We're doing our best to keep first and second grade apart from each other during the day. It doesn't make sense to shove everybody in the hallway as the bell rings. So they'll have their area while they relieve, and some will dismiss at 3:15 and some at 3:20. Transportation, masks are required for everybody. That's not a stable group. We've got mixed grades in there. So they're going to need to provide their own mask to and from. We'll have some disposable masks on the buses in case they forget them. And we'll take temperatures. I have our sanitizing sprayer that we'll use once a week. Sanitize the high-touch areas, the railing, things that kids share. We're going to have assigned seats, so we don't need to disinfect everything after every round because this kid is sitting in that seat and is going to come sit in that seat in the afternoon. So we'll sanitize as much as needed, but. So the lunch, we've got that worked out. This is a supervision nightmare with kids eating in different areas. First grade in the cafeteria, kindergarten in the choir room, second grade up on the deck. So we've got to have three people to watch that and then take them out to recess. So we've got separate groups using different areas. And then breakfast, we couldn't, our best solution, we didn't want to bring all those kids from different grades all together eating breakfast because that's how we normally do it. So it'll be a takeout only. So breakfast will be delivered to the classrooms. For those that want it, they'll take it home, eat it at home before school the next day. When we serve, the kids won't be grabbing milks. They won't be grabbing their silverware. The cooks will do that. We'll have a lot more, we'd be putting it on, you know, boxed lunch to take up on the deck. So there's some added cost there that that CARES money and Spark money will help with. For the secondary level, our high school students, they'll have the option to take their lunch and go home if they want. You know, we have open lunch, so a lot of them go home or somewhere else for lunch anyway. But if they want to, they can grab a school lunch and then leave if they like, or they can eat at school. We will have remote meal service for those that are learning remotely or if we're shut down for a period of time, kind of similar to what we did last spring. The change is that they're not all free. There was a special exception last spring, and in the summer, all the meals were free for everybody. That won't be the case. So remote learners can come get a lunch if they want to. I bet their meal account will be charged like normally. And then the library is open to the public in the green and yellow. We're basing whether we're open to the public on the county's mandate, just looking at the countywide cases. Open to students as needed. We'll have a schedule for when they come in. Our intention is to do the after-school program. Makes us nervous. We focus on stable groups, but we bring in different grades together. They'll do most of their activities down here and try to keep them separated by grade. We kind of decided we needed to do that because if we don't have that, where are they going to go? They're going to go to daycare where they're all mixed with other kids anyway. So at least here, we can maintain that separate grade. so at least here, we can, we can maintain that separate grade level. Extracurricular activities, this is the challenge. It gets important that kids have the activities. It is going to be a challenge in how we get this done. Do we have ballgames? Do we have concerts? Do we have crowds at them? It's going to be really a, a week-by-week, day-to-day thing in how we make those, those, those calls. So the Activities Association's put out a lot of guidance. We are asking the coaches to do an additional screening before they go to practice. You know, we've taken their temperature before they came to school. We want to make sure when we get in those environments where we're more active that we didn't develop symptoms over the course of the day. Same thing for ballgames. I read, saw a news story the other day about the CDC director being concerned about our kids because of the uptick in suicides and drug overdoses for high school-age students that we've seen since this pandemic began. And I see that with our kids. Our kids are not, not happy. They, they need to be around each other, they need things to do. So when we're talking, do we have activities? Do we get back to school? It's not just getting back to school, getting back to activities versus public health. There's a public health side to not having school and not having things for our kids to do, so it's really a public health versus public health issue. So those things are important, getting back to school is important, getting them in the classroom is the most important, but we can't forget about this side of things. The Activities Association is working on an alternative schedule. Some schools have canceled fall sports already. So they're working up a schedule that, that would push back the spring season and be able to do your fall sports between winter sports and spring sports. I don't know if it's going to work or not. Not know what's going to transpire with the Activities Association and how, how that will go this fall and depending on how the disease spreads. I don't, I don't know what's going to happen tomorrow, let alone when we have our, our first contest. So our goal is to do them as much as we can. We do still have to do our drills, emergency procedures. We're not going to bring all the students in here for a tornado drill at one time or pull the fire alarm and have everybody in the hall at the same time, but we'll do it So that's the plan until it changes. I think it's important for you all to know that, you know, there will be changes, there will be adjustments. I don't think we need to get back together and approve new changes. I'll keep you updated with any of those changes. If, if you all feel we need to get together and talk about some change, let me know and we can do that, of course.
I have one question. When I walked in, I saw the library was in the orange level. They're just using county case, just using that one top line?
Yeah, just for the public.
Just want to make sure.
Yep. They're, like today, they're close to the public and we're kind of leaning on the, through the library board to make some of those decisions. But it's open to school groups, so we'll still be utilizing the library.
You need approval on the revised plan?
Yeah, I'd ask for approval of this full operations plan.
It's been moved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the school operations plan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carried. HBAC bids.
I've got two bids for our rooftop replacement. We're replacing one on the auditorium and one on the old gym. One bid is for KVK, this is our outfit that we use for our preventive maintenance, they've done our boilers and the work over here. So their bid for equipment, labor, materials and the crane is $33,550. I've got a bid from Davis Electrical for the same thing, for $32,164. I've done my best to compare the specs of the units. KVK is bidding a York brand and Davis is bidding a day and night. I've looked at the specs, they're essentially the same. Warranty is the same, efficiency is essentially the same. I don't know anything about the day and night product, I know we have some York units, but I don't have any reason to say that we shouldn't just go with the low bid. So my recommendation would be to take Davis Electrical's bid for $32,164 for the rooftop
It's been moved.
It's been moved and seconded, that we accept Davis Electric's bid for $32,164. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carried. Okay, personnel.
I have a recommendation to hire Emily Foot as a classroom aide. If we need to go in executive session, we can sure do that. Otherwise, I'd ask for a motion to approve that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve Emily Foot as a classroom aide. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign.
She carries two out there?
I do, we are looking for more, we need paras, we need aides. It will, we will be staffed at a higher level than we have been with that supervision and trying to keep our aides in separate groups. It's a challenge, so we'll use some of that county money to, to cover that additional cost. So we're still looking. If you know of anybody, we need people.
Tell them I'm at the coffee shop.
Okay, anything else?
Nope.
Okay, and a motion adjourned? Second. It's moved and seconded, that we adjourned. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carried.